I would just remind everybody and ask everybody that if you haven't been recognized by myself, if you would please mute yourself at this time, so we're not hearing the background, background noise or any discussion that you're having, we won't hear it. It won't interfere with those that are participating in the meeting. Thank you. Is there a motion at this time to seal the executive session?
Mr. President, motion to the executive session, seal the minutes and to also make note that no votes were taken.
Motion by Mrs. Zalinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bonioli. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter, other action on payment of bills. We have the following supplier invoice approval list dated 6/15/2020. From the general fund, $266,277.57. From the sewer and water department, $345,721.42. For a total of $612,998.99. With the following electronic payments. The library, $37,949.15. To the school department, $1,680,723. To the inter-local trust for monthly insurance, $129,936.11. For retirement account, $4,814.88. To U.S. Bank for General Obligation Bond, $775,975. Total electronic payments of $2,629,398.4. For grand total payments of $3,242,397.3. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Zalinski?
Yes, so move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zalinski, second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter, other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilor's request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. A, town council minutes of May 18th, 2020 and June 1st, 2020. Communications and Animal Control Monthly Report for May 2020. North Smithfield Police Department Monthly Report for May 2020. North Smithfield Municipal Court Monthly Report for May 2020. North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Monthly Report for May 2020. And a resolution from the City of One Socket recognizing the month of June as Pride Month. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zalinski, second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes. No items were removed from the consent agenda. Full business. Discussion by council voter, other action on update of municipal building review task force. You have three invoices in a cover letter from the task force, stating their recommendation that the following invoices be approved for payment. Invoice number 1-8-0-1-7-2-3 dated 5/14/2020 in the amount of $2,757.24. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
Zalinski, second by Mrs. Bonioli and Mrs. O'Hara. Discussion? Just under discussion, Mr. Jesus, if you look at this cover sheet that came with this on the outstanding invoices, we've paid number 21 and 22 and 20 except the 90 cents on item 20. And we have to go back and look at the council of minutes approval and the letter of recommendation from the task force. They both had that number of $7,033.90. Can we just make sure that we rectify that?
Yes, we already did.
Okay.
Probably before you received, we received this, it probably crossed.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to approve invoice 1-8-0-1-7-2-3. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes. They also recommend invoice number 1-8-0-1-7-2-4 dated 5/18/2020 in the amount of $3,140. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
Zalinski, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes. And lastly, invoice number 1-8-0-1-7-2-5 dated 6/3/2020 in the amount of $7,187.50. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
Mrs. Zalinski, second by Mrs. Bonioli and Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes. In answer to Mr. Clifford's request at the beginning during the open forum, I do not have any document that he's asking about. I did not give it to the council. I don't have it with me for the meeting. We did discuss some of what we're looking to do at the municipal annex now that it's vacant. I would tell you that in the next couple of weeks, you will be getting an update from the task force. And I believe we discussed a meeting in July as being the date you would get the recommendation for the annex. It would be that third Monday in July, since we don't meet the first Monday in July. That's the date that we discussed. It would be 19th of July, I believe, is the date. Or 20th, 20th of July, I believe, was the date that we had mentioned. So I don't have that update with me right now. Next item, new business discussion by council voter, other action on budget transfer for building inspection. Mr. Jesus?
Yes, I am requesting a budget transfer from Inspection Department Travel and Dues of $1,000 to Office Supplies of $1,000 to purchase a copy machine.
So we're moving from travel and dues to office supplies?
Yes.
Okay. You've read the recommendation of the finance director, is there a motion?
So move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zalinski, second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is discussion by council voter, other action in regard to retaining outside counsel for appeal of decision of zoning official. Buxton Hollow, 300 Buxton Street, North Smithfield, Platte One, Lot 35. Is there a motion? Mr. Zalinski?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a solicitor, Leozy, to hire outside attorney angel as well as zoning expert, Mr. Pimental, to represent the town.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Bonioli. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Me?
Yes. Next item, discussion by council voter, other action on the property located at Platte One, Lot 91 and 92 owned by the Monjin Family Trust. I've received numerous phone calls, which I usually don't get. It was kind of surprising that I got a lot of phone calls on this. Phone calls and I did follow up with the administrator to have him talk with the building and zoning official. And he said as well that he has heard complaints and whatnot. So I put this on the agenda so we could discuss it. I'm not looking for us to take any action per se on this. We can if we need to, but I wasn't looking for us to take action. It was more or less something going on here so that we would all be aware of what's going on, how long it's been going on, and that there are some serious issues up there. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Zalinski?
I do, I'm happy to see this here because this has been a very frustrating experience for folks that live nearby these properties. Our zoning official has been pursuing this matter for many months with little to no cooperation from the business. I think it's fair to say, everyone knows that I have been an advocate for business in my tenure here as the administrator. This is not a circumstance where I can be that advocate. This is not the kind of business that, or the way that we want to see business run in our town. The outside storage of multiple materials, the actions without requesting permits, the condition of the building, all of it is appropriate for the neighbors to be very disappointed in. And to his credit, our zoning official and our assistant have also done what they can. The problem that we've had is frankly of late is COVID, that the municipal court cannot meet. So has not been able to meet. We are trying to move that forward as efficiently as we can without creating risk to attendees. We hope to have a court date announced soon to be able to take this matter before the court. Again, it has been there before. And get an order to be able to bring it back into compliance.
If you look at the paperwork that's been submitted from the municipal court, from the building inspector and whatnot, this stuff's been going on since December of 2016, with the most recent one being in May of 2020. I got a call from someone that lives up there and they said, "You gotta come by and see this." And I've seen it briefly, like just driving down 102, not really looking at it. But I made it a point to go by there and really look at it. And you see unreduced vehicles, all kinds of junk stored on the property and whatnot. And then in the last week or so, they called and they were like really, really upset. And so I went back up there and it has ramped up even to a greater extent where they're dumping more stuff. Now there's three dump truck loads of asphalt dumped on the property. There's more vehicles parked up there. The house that's one of those lots has no front door on it. It just, you know, and then I got this letter that I forwarded to all of you that was signed by the 30 people that live in that area, which was really telling, I thought, that, you know, it's just one or two neighbors. It's a whole neighborhood up there that's concerned from Homecrest all the way over to Florence Street. I did get that after the clerk had sent the packet out. And that's why I forwarded it to everybody, not for discussion, but just so you would have it for tonight, so that it was something that you were aware of. I do agree with Gary that in following the chain of events that's going on, yeah, the municipal court not meeting is kind of holding our hands a little bit and he's trying to resolve that issue. So that's the one thing that's kind of in our favor, that we're going to get the municipal court going again. But it appears he's been to municipal court before and it hasn't had an effect on anything. And I don't know what the next step to that is. If you do something and you find him and you can find him, find him and he doesn't pay the fine, what difference does it make? So I don't know what the solution to that is. I don't know if any of you have been out there to look at it since you've received any of this stuff or if you have any comments. Mrs. Bonioli?
Well, since you stated, since it started in 2016, I think anybody that drives down that way has seen that month after month after year, it's only getting worse. It's only getting worse and it's really not acceptable the way it is. Something needs to stop this progression.
Unfortunately, O'Hara, I'll get you a call in a minute.
I'm gonna be very honest, it's like an in-your-face thing. It started, I hadn't been there since like February. I couldn't believe the junk and went up the side street. I went all the way around and these poor people, they improved their home, they're paying taxes and to be next to this, something has to be done.
Mr. Zalinski?
Mr. President, do we have verification at municipal court? We have a summons here, 19-20-02, 19-20-02. And it's to Mr. Monjin, informing him that there'll be a municipal court date for this Wednesday coming 17th. Two questions. One, is the court still going to be operational on 17th because of COVID? And the second part of this, is Mr. Monjin aware that his day in court is when this coming Wednesday is 17th?
I can't answer that.
Yeah. Councilmen, if I might, at this point, there is no indication that the court will go forward on the 17th. That was the schedule. But unfortunately, the restrictions have not lifted sufficiently for the judge to have established that. Part of what brings this forward is there was an action to delay that hearing till September, which
That's ridiculous.
unacceptable and, you know, we've got different branches of government. It's not for the administration to tell the court what to do. But through David, through the solicitor, I should say, we have communicated and encouraged that we look at, I have learned is happening in other communities where court is being held with parameters where only the people related to a particular case are allowed into the room. Others who are there for other cases have to wait outside and be called in. So, you know, there are means that the courts have been able to move forward. But I have to defer to the judge as to how he feels about managing this in his circumstance.
Yeah, Mr. President, basically, this is initial for the courts. That summons was dated May 6th, informing Mr. Monjin that his trial date of the May 20th had been rescheduled to June 17th. So that's why I was inquiring, are all parties aware of the 17th? Or is any other notification gone out that the date has changed? Thank you Administrator Zoski, it makes sense that individuals could be seen in order to protect against the spread of the virus. I understand that, so that's, those are my questions. I just want to make sure that Mr. Monjin was aware of it. Is the court going to be operational, that's all. So, thank you.
I think, like what Gary said, I mean, you can go to the dentist now, they come out and get you when it's your turn to go into the dentist. I think municipal court can kind of run the same way, hopefully, and we can get this up and going. The other question that I have, is there anything else, Gary, that we can do building and zoning side to stop this? Or is there only way is to just notify them of a violation and then has to follow the due course?
You know, these are not areas where I'm an expert, but my understanding at this point is that we have other things that we can within the actions available to the zoning official and the assistant. And it is in the court. I do think, and I hesitate to do this because I'm not a fan of creating regulation that impacts, you know, 99.99% of the people because of the non-compliant 0.01%. But this is one that probably in the aftermath, we should be looking at to see what perhaps we should be changing in our zoning ordinance to understand where we might be able to get more teeth into the rules to force action when people, when businesses like this are so remonstrant in their approach. It's just, it's very, very disappointing.
I know that the two lots have different classifications. One is residential and one is business neighborhood. And I just find it hard to believe that this type of a business is a business neighborhood, that it fits into that, into our zoning use, that it's allowed under that. But it's not for me to decide that, that's what we have building officials.
Right.
But I just, I'd like to see if we can get something going and get this thing moving to try to get some resolution on it before it continues, you know, just continuing to get worse instead of better.
I certainly think that our zoning officials have done that. I certainly don't enjoy meeting the folks in the neighborhood when they're in my face, at the post office or otherwise, and want to see it move forward. By the way, this is, I don't know if I'll recall, but we had a circumstance not many months ago with the same entity with a noise-related issue on property off of Mount Pleasant Road where there were grinding of stumps that, you know, was an operation that was not compliant with zoning also. This is a repeat offender, if you will.
Any other comments, questions by the council?
So, okay, wait, so, Mr. President. So I guess my question was similar to yours. Is there anything else we can do? And it sounds like this is definitely a court matter for now. But I do agree, I think, you know, if someone isn't following our ordinances, at what point, if the court makes a decision, do we have any other actions that we can take? Or is it just, that's it, we have to follow that and we can look to change our ordinance or change our regulation after the fact for future application or future use? That was the only thing I had.
Was there even an application for this type of business to go in there?
I can't answer whether we even needed an application, that's, I don't know that. I just know that
I mean, prior to that, Wally Dumas had a plumbing office in the back building and he lived there. So this was just
I'm aware of what was there, I've been
Right. Right, so this just came about and has been growing since.
That's why I ask if it's business neighborhood and is this an allowed business in business neighborhood? You get to that point and that may be part of what he's being cited for. zoning violations may be related to that.
You know, these things, if I might, Mr. President, these things can start with just an office.
Correct.
Then come, you know, the large vehicles and then come the logs and then come the piles of asphalt. It doesn't, you know
It's kind of, it's almost like the other property we have at the other end of town on 146 near the Lincoln Line with all the dumpsters and whatnot stored over there that, you know, another issue that we look at and it's, you know, I mean, I guess maybe we got to start going through this and looking at it more as a councilman saying, "Okay, what are we doing about this one? What are we doing about this one?" So that we can make sure people are in compliance and that we're not getting more complaints and whatnot. I think that's really the big issue that I brought it to us is so that we're aware of it and we can try to bring people back into compliance and put things back so that, you know, it's not fair to those people that live up there. They've lived, a lot of them have lived there longer than they've been alive. Now they're dealing with this and a lot of them are really upset. They're really upset about this and it's causing them a lot of angst. You really, you talk to some of them, Gary's run into a few of them and there's a lot of angst up there about what's going on. They are really upset about this. Moving on, we will keep this on the radar and if we need to, we'll bring it back again at another date to give you an update on it if nothing else. Next item, discussion by council voter, action on award and issue purchase order to J. Solisi and Sons, Inc. to supply, assemble, deliver and install lockers at North Smithfield High School. Just come on to your
I'm the one that put it on the agenda. I'm the one that, I received it from the school department. I thought maybe one of them would be on Zoom, but I guess not. So I received this from Alan over at the school department. It was recommended from Gilbane to award it to J. Solisi and Sons. And they're also on the MPA for $38,800.
And that's to do the, that's to do the boys locker room, correct?
Yes, and this is coming out of the bond.
This is bond money?
Yes, that's what has to come to us, yes.
You've read the, did this go through, Cindy, did this go through your office to go out the bid? Or did it just go through?
It did not. It went through the school department because they were going to put it under Gilbane and that project. From my understanding, they could not use, even though J. Solisi was the lowest, they could not be under Gilbane. I'm not sure why. So they asked me to look at it and accept the bid as is through the MPA. And it was also the lowest bid that Gilbane was able to get from their three vendors.
You've heard the recommendation of the finance director, is there a motion to approve? Can we get a motion in a second for discussion at least?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Ogier, is there a second? Second by O'Hara, discussion? No discussion? But this is the same company that installed those lockers in 1966 when the school opened.
I just remembered, that was one of the reasons why
Same company.
I think it's did, actually the manufacturers. And I think that for some reason, because of the contract, they couldn't go under Gilbane. But we would get a better price if they went through us, through the MPA. Yeah, they said they were the manufacturer, so they worked at least expensive.
Okay. No other discussion?
I'm a little, if I may, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Help my memory on this one. We've heard comments made by the school committee that they used some of their funds to pay for the science lab in the boys locker room. Am I mixing these two together? This is part of the locker room.
It is, it is part of the locker room.
Yeah, so
And that's why I raised the initial question on this, is this go through the town or through the school department? And it went off, it actually went off on MPA, so it almost, it almost doesn't matter. But this is just, goes to that discussion that we had the other night that we're going to have on Thursday night with the school committee, to kind of sort through this and find out, okay, where is all of this coming and where is all of this going? Because you can see it now, you're not really sure which part of money this is coming from.
Well, ultimately, it comes from the taxpaying part of money. I'm going to vote to approve it, but I'd like to have a little better understanding of it when we have that discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
President, if I might?
Mr. Zoski?
I think the, you know, this needs to go forward. I don't want to confuse any issues, but as the finance director just said, this is coming from the bond money. In our last discussion on these issues, we heard that all that money's been spent. Clearly, that's not the case. And so, anyway, this needs to go forward. This was part of the plan that was clearly identified. I encourage that this move, because this work needs to be done this summer. And, you know, these things aren't just, you know, these lockers aren't just sitting around. But just, there's a lot to discuss here and we'll get into more of that on Thursday.
Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Bonioli?
I'm sorry, I lost the internet, I'm just logging in on my phone.
Do you want to vote on it?
I'm going to recuse because I didn't hear the whole thing.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Zalinski?
Do you mind just waiting a few minutes so Counselor Bonioli could reiterate so she could hear everything that was discussed? I mean, it's an important vote.
Yep.
Okay, so if you could just repeat, so I see, I'm looking now at the invoicing. Okay, so if you could just repeat. So I see, I'm looking now at the invoicing. And what was the motion?
The motion was to approve. Motion by, yeah, second by Mrs. O'Hara, and then we were discussing, and, and the question was, what to the finance director, did she put this out the bid, or did it go out the bid to the school department? And it went out through the school department, but it's actually coming off a master price agreement, which the town can also piggyback.
Okay.
And then, and then you heard the comments that Gary just made about this is coming out of the bond money, and Mrs. Zolinski's concerns about where the, where the funds were coming from as well. Did you hear that part?
I didn't hear that part. That's the part I missed.
Okay, we, we were just discussing on where these funds were coming from, and, and into the whole project, and we, we more or less stated that it would be up for discussion on, we need to go forward with it, but it would be one of the items on the discussion, under the global thing of the school bond discussion with the committee on Thursday night.
Okay, all right. I'm ready, then I can vote.
Okay.
All right.
Do the roll call again?
Roll call again.
Okay. Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yeah.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van May?
Yes. Just a reminder that we are meeting Thursday?
Seven PM, not six forty-five.
Seven PM. You will get your agenda tomorrow, right? It will be
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Zolinski, second by Mrs. O'Hara. For everyone attending?
Mrs. Barnamoli?
Yeah.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Rozier?
Yes.
Mr. Zolinski?
Yes.
Mr. Van May?
Yes.